I'd like to call this special meeting to order on June 5th at 6:35 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel interviews? Marcy moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Terrific. May I have a motion to return to open session and adjourn the special meeting? Marcy moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Terrific. Okay, may I have a motion to, or I'd like to call this regular meeting? Okay. So now we're all done with the old. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen on June 5th to order. It is 7:30. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is for Selectmen's report. Beautiful weather for the holiday weekend was fantastic. It was great to see everyone there, including so many residents that lined the route cheering and waving flags. Bruce Kinlock, a Vietnam War veteran, was unanimously selected by the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission to serve as Grand Marshal. His remarkable service record of having flown over 200 combat missions as a helicopter pilot between 1965 and 66 speaks for itself, and it was a real honor to have him serve as Darien's Grand Marshal. I want to thank all the organizers of the parade and all of the participants, including my fellow Selectmen, and I also want to extend my appreciation to everyone that attended the ceremony to honor the fallen servicemen and women that was held in the Spring Grove Cemetery immediately after the parade. The Darien community has always come together to support and honor those that serve. The drive-through food drive that was postponed twice due to bad weather took place on Saturday. The drive benefits person-to-person and collected over 1,700 pounds of food for those in need. So, also this past Saturday, the Public Works Department sponsored a hazardous waste day to provide people with an opportunity to get, to remove items that are not permitted at the town dump. 113 residents and Darien residents and 112 residents from neighboring communities dropped off an estimated 172 households of hazardous waste. And a household, in this case, equals 15 to 20 gallons, so it's a significant amount. As part of an Eagle Scout project, approximately 30 volunteers, scouts and their parents and adult leaders from Troop 19190 out of Norwalk and Troop 35 out of Darien, the Darien Beautification Commission, the Park and Rec Commission members, all got together to pick up trash at, for two hours over at Weed Beach. And it was, the project was made possible by support from the Home Depot in Stamford, Lowe's in Norwalk, Rings End in Darien, Signs of Success, and the Darien Beautification Commission. The Emergency Operations Center, the EOC, in-person training was held at the Darien Police Station on March, I'm sorry, on May 23rd and 24th. So there were two morning sessions that each lasted four hours, Kate?
I don't know, I wasn't there.
Okay, I was there, I should remember. But it was, yeah, it was four hours. Our department heads attended prior to the start of hurricane season, so this included a small tabletop exercise to conclude the training on the second day. And it's very important and was very impressive to see town employees so dedicated to preparing for possible emergencies. You've heard me talk about the West Cog Noise Abatement Study. So 7,400 residents in New Canaan and Darien, based on their vicinity to the railroad crossings and stations, will be receiving a postcard in the mail. It should be at the end of this month at the latest, and it will have a QR code on it. There, this is the public outreach part of this project. They'll be doing a survey, so you can download the survey right there, or you can go onto the West Cog site and fill it out there. And this is very important for people that are following that issue to make sure your voice is heard on that. That's my report. Kate?
Nothing, nothing major right now, just getting ready for the year-end, still working on the website upgrade. So that's it.
Liaisons, Mike?
Blight Review Board meets on the 14th, so I will have an update after that.
I have two updates. Forgive me on one, Thriving Youth Task Force, the last meeting was on May 19th. I left my notes at home, so I'm good, I have reviewed briefly the notes and I want to go over it quickly. They did do a review of the year and the programming, and things went well, including two new events, which was the Senior Sundolph and the inaugural walk out of darkness. Am I saying that right? And they had some programming, including a very successful evening with Lisa Demore, which was on May 7th, with over 700 people that attended. They brought in and introduced the new Director of Mental Health for the Darien Public Schools and the new Director of Security for Darien Public Schools. And then they talked also about the survey that will be going over this summer, and this was the one that was done in Darien Public Schools. And the results should be published this fall. One of the things they found was that there was some low 12th grade participation, and they think that's probably just around the period of which the survey was administered, but they'll have more information as far as results this fall.
So they kind of take a break in the summer, right?
They do take a break in the summer. They break between May and September.
And they do the survey every two years?
Yes, they're gonna, they used to do it every three, but now they're gonna do it every two, based on the record they get. They need to do every two now. So that's Thriving Youth. And then for the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee, on May 24th, we had our last meeting, and we discussed the revised cost estimates for Henley and Royal, which are up. There have been some changes, both from the town, the schools, and the state side. From the schools, they have some more security and data IT issues that they wanted. One of the issues is that what they've gone over and they've realized some rooms have more ceiling tiles that need to come down, and if the room has 18 out of 30 ceiling tiles come down, they're gonna replace the remaining ceiling tiles. They're gonna do the best they can, but they won't have half of the room done. The revised estimates based on the different work are coming in about $2 million above. There is still a contingency, and if all of the bids come in at estimate, they will be fine, but if the bids go up, there will be over about a million and a half, but that includes the $300,000 in add alternates that right now are on the list. Royal is in the same situation. They are still under budget, but not as much as previously. And if they do all the add alternates and the bid estimates come up, it will bring the project above. So they're hoping that the bids come out and the estimates come back, you know, as they expected. They're gonna go to bid, and on June 22nd for Henley and Royal. We're gonna meet this Wednesday, June 7th, on homes, and those numbers we just got today. So the committee will review, and we will meet on Wednesday evening. And we're planning on going to bid on that on June, no, early July, sorry. It's gonna be two weeks later. Anything I can answer from?
No. You're, you're meeting every, still meeting every week?
No, we're meeting like twice a month now, and, but it is dependent on some dates. We're waiting for the state, you know, as far as we can get information back, either from the state or from the construction or there are other ones.
Sir?
Sure. Mental Health Task Force Subcommittee met this morning, which has kind of a brief meeting to discuss maybe some programming for the summer and then into the fall, as we prepare for, you know, kind of a slower season with kids all being out of school and being home. One of the things I did want to remind you is that the mental health first aid training, they'll be hosting that again on August 1st and 3rd at the Darien Depot. I highly recommend anybody who has not taken it to go ahead and do it. It is a really resourceful training program. Ally Ramstek are, is the one who's gonna be running it, and she's done a great job, and she's pretty robust in this program, so highly recommend that. Oxford Building Committee, I have not met again since the last update, but our next meeting is actually gonna be at the school. We have not done that yet in, since COVID, that we've actually gotten to the school. So it'll be really great to see everything sort of come to fruition. I know that they are at the tail end, waiting for the kids to leave, and then some of the major stuff that they can't do with kids in the building will happen over the course of the summer. Paving should happen in August, and the kids should be in school by September 1st, so all good. I'll keep you updated on how things look when I come back for the next meeting.
Okay, all right. Always good reports. Okay, any public comment?
Nope.
Okay. New business. First item is discuss and take action on a request to approve a lease for 49 Great Island Grove.
I have hard copies. Had sent you revised one. Just recognizing the rent as two pieces, base rent plus utilities. That's the only change, but everything else is as has been discussed previously.
So the terms are the same?
Terms are the same.
And the rent is?
And there's, I don't believe there was anything unique about this lease, you know, where some of the elements had some unique issues.
Right, Bobby said this is pretty.
This one was pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. So, so the rent is $5,200, and the town is also charging $300 for electricity, right? And water, Kate?
Utilities. Water and electricity.
For a total of $5,500?
Correct.
Okay. And then if we approve this tonight, this goes to the RTM tonight?
Yes.
Right. So we actually have the RTM representative here, Mark Adalata, and so he will bring that information back. So, any other questions? No? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the lease for 49 Great Island Grove? Mike moves. Sarah seconds, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
One question. All of them are next approved now, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, all the leases for the residential's have been approved.
Right, before the RTM today.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a proposed flooding plan, flooding policy. And I took into consideration, well, I wanted to first start by saying that we've, you know, we've had, over the last few years, we've had significant flooding events in town, and right now, we're starting to see where some of the work that we've been, we've been doing is coming to, coming to a conclusion as far as the initial stage, right? So we did some studies, the town has some projects they're doing, and then we have our regular maintenance and infrastructure work that we do. So we, I felt that it was important that we have kind of a holistic approach to how we're going to look at all of these elements. So, so I asked John actually to, to help out on this, and Kate, and Ed, yes, Ed Gentel provided a lot of insight. So I thought, Marcy, your idea was terrific, and I will read the policy, okay? And I, I did incorporate a little bit of wording change due to some information that Mike shared with me, so at the very end. So, "Policy for flood-related investments. The purpose of this policy is to provide a framework for investments in flood-related infrastructure projects. The key principles of this policy are as follows. Maintenance. The town will continue to diligently maintain its drainage and flood-related infrastructure, including culverts, floodwalls, pipes, drains, levees, and other such assets. Holistic approach. The town will ensure that all flooding infrastructure decisions are based on expert evaluations that consider the full scope of the flooding challenge. The town will strive to keep its perspectives on flooding problems up to date, pursuing new studies when warranted. All options developed will include a cost-benefit analysis and an assessment of taxpayer impact. Areas of benefit to explore will include flood risk reduction, assurance of access for emergency vehicles during a flood event, property protection, reduced damage costs, community resilience, and reduced flood anxiety. Investment objectives. First, do no harm. Investments will not transfer a flooding problem to other downstream or upstream properties. All proposed projects should mitigate or resolve flooding by ensuring drainage into bodies of water, streams, Long Island Sound, for example, capable of handling additional discharge. Reasonable number of properties improved. Investments should improve a reasonable number of properties, given the amount of money invested. Costly projects that benefit a small number of properties will not be considered. Real improvement. Investments should provide meaningful improvement in flood resilience. Mitigation standard. The town at a minimum will adhere to all planning and zoning regulations and Town of Darien Drainage Manual criteria. Funding. The town will proactively seek alternative funding sources for flood-related infrastructure, including federal and grant opportunities and local business cost-sharing arrangements. Efficiencies. The town will pursue completion of priority investments as efficiently as possible, adhering to standard approval channels, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, RTM, as well as regulatory approval schedules and construction timelines. Communication. The town will strive for transparency in ongoing flooding and stormwater management decisions through regular Board of Selectmen meeting updates, as well as comprehensive public outreach, including media, Channel 79, social media, and the active inclusion of affected property owners. And I actually had changed that wording, and I don't have that copy right here in front of me, but Mike, I did take that into consideration.
There was one other thought I had today, where in the holistic approach paragraph, perhaps considering adding on a sentence at the end that says, "In brief, we will consider the totality of the circumstances when evaluating flood-related investments," in that, I think that's sort of a catch-all, I mean, that's really what we're saying above, I just like the phrase totality of the circumstances, and, but, I mean, I think it's great to have the, the policy, I mean, that's just a wordsmith thing, but I think it's a useful endeavor to have a policy like this.
Okay. What was the, after the totality of the circumstances, when?
In brief.
I got that, I got to the circumstances.
When evaluating flood-related investments, and I took that because that's the top of the, that's the name of the policy.
Thank you.
Kate, do you have anything you want to add to this?
No, I think, seen it through many iterations, but I think it's a good policy. It falls, it follows along the lines of the land purchase policy that you approved about a year ago, maybe, where we discussed the things that would be considered when doing the investments. I think the do no harm piece is very important, because not only should it be our policy, it's actually regulations. We would not be allowed by the regulators like DEEP to solve the problem in one place if it creates a problem in another place. We'd actually have to prove that we won't create a problem, you know, downstream or upstream. And I think it's, it's broad enough that it gives us, you know, by saying we will adhere to the planning and zoning regulations, it gives us room for growth in there. So I think it's good.
I have a couple of questions for you. And I sent Mike comments to you. I, I love that we're focusing on flooding. Obviously, it's a huge concern for so many residents, particularly down near where I live, on the South Box area. My concern is, who determines the cost-benefit analysis for some of these projects? You know, if we're gonna say that we're gonna look at the benefit and the, we're not gonna tell people who makes those decisions, I think that's hard. Is it gonna be us as a group, is it gonna be a larger, you know, like who makes those decisions?
That would be our job.
Yeah.
Should we put that in there?
Well, right, and then what defines a reasonable number of properties? You know, if you've got, you know, 100 houses that are affected, and a project may only benefit 11, but those 11 were hugely affected, you know, how do we define reasonable number of properties? Or meaningful improvement? When we look at, you know, we want to adhere to certain standards, but, you know, we look at what happened with the 250-year storm, the 500-year storm. So are our standards in line with the 50-year storm? Are they in line with the 250-year storm? So that residents know, like if there's a project that's recommended, and these are the different outcomes based on the different, you know, 50 years, 100 years, 250-year storms, well, we only really kind of follow the 50-year storm, so we're gonna stay down here, but, you know, if we look at the 250-year storm, for example, it may affect more properties. Does that make any sense, Terri?
Yeah, but I think, I think that every area, you'll, I think that you might find that, for instance, if you're looking at 100-year versus, let's say that a 50-year versus 100-year, right? So you might find that you can, you're not studying for a 100-year, your, your project is at a 50-year, but you might find that you will get adequate protection for a 100-year storm. So I think it's, it's gonna be a little bit on a case-by-case basis.
I mean, I, I mean, I understand Sarah's concern, I think you balance that with knowing that it's, it's difficult to put a number unreasonable, and I think it's also difficult in, when you're looking at if you're going to use the standard of the 50-year storm or 250-year storm, I think you have to apply those rules on the case-by-case basis and be informed by experts. And it may be, I mean, I think one thing that you have to look at at these properties, if you do nothing, let's say it's just one property, but let's say it's a property that has a tax-based revenue of an extreme amount of money, you may balance that out and say, well, this is just one property, but it's income producing to the town, and so it may be worth being part of a, a project. But all those things, I think it's why it's a fact, you know, you know, a very fact-sensitive analysis that you do on a case-by-case basis, and I think that this is just saying that, you know, we're going to be looking hard at all of these matters as they, as they come up.
John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, do you want to say something?
Yeah, can you guys hear me? Just a way in briefly. So in writing all this, the people kind of wondering why we would have a policy like this, the purpose was to provide a framework, for lack of a better description, for us to say no. Right, like no, we're not gonna do these particular things, like leaving infrastructure unmaintained or approving certain projects. I think Sarah raises a good point about how to quantify when we would say no, and it really is hard to say. I mean, you can describe extreme examples, five houses for a $500 million project, we're not gonna approve that. 500 houses for a $50 project, yes, we're gonna approve that. So it's oh, somewhere in between, but it's very, very hard, I think, in a policy to specifically quantify what we would and would not approve, or to what standard we would and would not build. I think ultimately, it's gonna have to be our judgment, as someone said before, on a case-by-case basis, that we collectively would say, given the facts that are presented to us, feels like a reasonable decision. I think in terms of the experts informing our decisions, we would actually absolutely reply, rely on third parties to provide a professionally prepared cost-benefit analysis, where they come in and then, and describe proposed investments against maybe a set of metrics that either they define or we work with them to define. But I think making sure we've got enough third parties to provide the expertise we need to ultimately make the judgment as, as elected officials, I think that's gonna be important. I'd also stress what Monica read in the policy, which is, whatever the experts advise us, it's ultimately our judgment to recommend something to the Board of Finance, who will then take our recommendation into account and make their own decisions with regard to financial implications. And then, of course, it goes to the RTMs, so the assurance to provide to the public is, look, this is a policy to provide a framework for us to make these decisions based on the facts and projects that are presented to us, but then once we make our judgment, it goes through the normal channels, and it ultimately gets to a point of approval.
Are we using some language that other towns have maybe used? I know we're not the only waterfront town that's had some of these flooding issues, right? Are there other towns that are kind of going through the same exercise?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is kind of a joint exercise.
Okay. Just came to mind, I didn't think of this before, but what is the town's obligation to do flood mitigation on private roads? I know Darien is filled with a lot of private roads.
It's not about the road.
Okay.
If it's, say it's our pipe draining down the road, we might have an obligation. But we don't have very many obligations on private roads. But I could see where somebody could claim it, if we have a big drain or too small a drain pipe.
Yep.
Or something that is causing a backup, then it could be ours.
But otherwise.
But otherwise, yeah.
It's their, it's their responsibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have a lot of private.
If we had to tear up, for example, a private road in order to fix a flooding or drainage-related problem, I think it would be our obligation to replace that road or to reconstruct it after we tore it up, but I agree with Kate, I don't think our obligation extends beyond that.
It's a difficult concept for people sometimes, that as the government, we are not responsible for everything, and the flooding is a prime example of that.
So as I said, we, we have kind of a lot of things that are in the works that we'll be bringing forward. Sarah, you asked about the studies, and so this was kind of to help us create guidance and a framework to, to make those decisions that we will be, will be responsible for going forward, so. Any other comments on this?
So are we gonna modify it so it, we look at where it says, we'll be looking at each of these issues and concerns on a case-by-case basis?
Was that under the holistic, what Mike said?
Well, reasonable number of properties improved, or real improvement. I think by not putting in a specific metric, then you're leaving it to be the judgment of the board at the time. I don't think you actually need to say on a case-by-case basis.
But then should we say who will make the decision, which is the?
I do think that's a good thing to put in there at some place that the Board of Selectmen is the starting point.
The other thing to mention is that we can set this policy, but it's something we can also modify. This is a new area for us in terms of significant flood investments, and so as we work through these decisions, if there's some aspect of this policy which, again, is a framework for decision-making, not something that forces a particular decision precision, we certainly can modify the policy going forward. This was just to, to try to help frame decisions and under what circumstances would we say no.
You know, you could take this sentence that Mike suggested adding, and instead of saying, "We will consider," say in brief, "the Board of Selectmen will consider."
So say, say.
So that, "In brief, the Board of Selectmen will consider the totality of the circumstances when evaluating flood-related investments." And then I think that makes it clear that you are the starting point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like "in brief."
Okay, leave that out. Just say the Board of Selectmen will.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Any other thoughts, John? Did you hear that?
I, I did, I think that's okay. I, I think I'm much more in charge, so it's, it's good.
Okay. Okay.
I'm just more concerned about how folks will translate the words reasonable and meaningful. Well?
I think Sarah, that's gonna change, it's going to evolve over time. It's not just about the people here, it's about the circumstances.
No, a hundred percent. I know a lot of people are watching and they're very concerned.
Yeah. I think some things are obvious, like, you know, when we, we had talked about the, you know, the project that was being proposed years ago for Stony Brook. And I forget the dollar amount, it was a huge dollar amount that was gonna lower the water flooding levels very, very little. And that's a clear case of, you know, that's not real improvement. But some things will be subjective. There's no way around it.
Yeah. Very difficult decisions.
Right. We have to start somewhere. So. Okay. Incorporating Mike's additions.
And then whatever, I don't know what your note said about the, I mean, my thought was we will be transparent instead of striving for.
I'm gonna go and get it because I wanna, if we can wrap this up tonight, I just wrote the wrong paper.
Thanks, Mark.
The owl's got you. Because Bobby Brown's got you here, too. I think he's coming with you.
Okay, so this is what I had changed on the last paragraph. So, "Under communication, the town will provide transparent, clear, and understandable communication on ongoing flood, flooding and stormwater management decisions through regular Board of Selectmen meeting updates, as well as comprehensive public outreach, including print media, Channel seventy-nine, social media, and ongoing dialogue with affected property owners."
Perfect.
You like that better? Okay.
Works for me.
Works. Okay, so that's the last paragraph. I, I'll just give it to you.
You'll give me that tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll give it to you. Okay. Any other adjustments or ideas? No? Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the policy for flood-related investments?
As amended, yeah.
As amended. Mike moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Oh, yep, got you on. Okay.
Pass on.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is minutes to review and approve the minutes of the May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting. May I have a motion to approve as presented? Okay. All in favor?
Who are we taking as the motion?
Uh, I'm sorry.
I saw two hands over there.
We'll take Mike this time. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. Um, next item is agenda review. Any topics board members wish to go over?
The only item was a follow-up from a previous one. We talked about possibly, um, looking at a proclamation for June, and I didn't know where we were with that.
For the Pride?
Correct.
Yes, we have a proclamation, um, that we will be presenting at the event.
That's fantastic. Thank you. That's great to hear. That's good.
The eleventh.
That's good. Thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay.
Thank you.
No? John, thanks for joining us.
Good night, John.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn? Marcy moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.